I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meeting Monday, November 13th, 2023. It is now 6:30. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubonah.
Present.
Eight members.
Eight members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If we can get a moment of silence, and please use it as you wish. Turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2023-086, order land order taken eminent domain 119 parkingway.
Thank you. I know, yes, I'm going to recognize Counselor McCarthy, and I think we're going to go into Jim Fatsis. But go right ahead, Counselor.
Do you want to start with some of those?
Do you? If I could, just to elaborate a little bit, if I could, Counselor. Let's start with Jim Fatsis from the Planning Department, our director. Go right ahead, Mr. Fatsis.
Through you, Mr. President, to the council. This is a, this is about process, which is basically adopting the order of taking. As you will always recall, the city council in June of '22 authorized for downtown property acquisitions as part of the DIF4 bond authorization package. Before the body for Monday's meeting is a formal taking order submitted in June that will confirm one of those acquisitions, the property located at 119 parkingway. The completion of the acquisition process will allow the city to move forward with the next steps, which include a land disposition agreement and development plan for the above referenced property that will be submitted to the body in the near future. You'll also receive a confidential legal memo regarding the taking, and the legal team is here on hand for the meeting tonight. The confirmation of the previous approved property acquisition continues to fulfill one of the original strategies of the city's urban renewal planning in Quincy Center, the redevelopment of the former Ross parking garage site, and working with private investment partners that come forward. New development sites are created and public infrastructure improvements are identified for public funding. So again, this is just completing a process that has already been before the council. And I would ask Solicitor Timmons to touch base on, you know, what is actually going to occur and what we're trying to put before you tonight.
Go right ahead, Mr. Timmons.
Good evening, councilors. Mr. President, I just have one matter really to address. I worked to prepare the final council order before you tonight. As you know, this was originally submitted in June. There was one amendment or correction to be made to Exhibit A, the property description. That was the result of continued work by the engineers who, after the introduction of the order in June, they refined the plan of the site for the taking. And during that process of refinement, there were various encumbrances that were identified. And by that term, I mean things like water sewer lines that are crossing the site. There was a pedestrian pathway, and there's a couple of other items. Well, Attorney Masterman and his team, who worked on the taking, checked all these encumbrances to make certain that none of them affected the title to the property. And once all the encumbrances were cleared in terms of impact on title, the plan was finalized, and the surveyors recommended that we refine the Exhibit A to match the plan. So the Exhibit A before you tonight addresses the same area, 43,000-plus square feet, but the description slightly different, just based on the refinement in the site plan. So other than that, the matter before you is, as was discussed and voted on back in June. Attorney Masterman is here to answer any particular questions you might have. One final thing, the vote tonight, I, we have traditionally had two distinct votes, but it's fine tonight, in talking with Attorney Masterman, it's fine tonight that the motion indicate that you're going to approve the taking and you're going to adopt the recommended award of 9.45 million. I had explained in my memo to you that there were, there was significant appraisal work done. There was an initial appraisal, a review appraisal, and then an appraisal done at Attorney Masterman's request. And that's all been reviewed by the project team, and the agreed upon amount is 9.45. So the motion could just be to vote to approve the taking and to adopt the recommended value on Exhibit B. If there are any questions, I'll have Attorney Masterman come up on the technical issues.
Just before I open it up to Counselor McCarthy, I just want to let all the councilors know that we, this was on the agenda back in June 20th, 2023. It was before us, right before the summer vacation, so it was the last meeting, and it was put into the Finance Committee. So I would like to recognize our Finance Chair, Counselor McCarthy. Oh, sorry. You want to go with?
Is it an ordinance? It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's an ordinance. Correction. It says Finance on this little booklet. But anyways, it's in both. It's in both. It's a duel. It's in both Counselor McCarthy and Counselor. Oh, you would like to defer to him? Okay.
Thanks, Chuck.
You'd like to yield a little bit here? We're going to open it up to, I'd like to recognize Counselor McCarthy. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Fatsis and Mr. Timmons. It's been a little while, as the President said, on regards to what we approved. So it was nice to get that memo, refreshing our memories on, on planning. Mr. Fatsis and Jim, thanks for the memo that lays out what the motion is. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the order, which is 2023-086, of taking and approving the award amount of 9.5, 9.45 million as recommended. I put that in the form of a motion.
So motion made by Counselor McCarthy to the order of the taking and to adopt the eminent domain, and I have seconded by Counselor Phelan for the 9.45 million. It was in both Finance and Ordinance, and I have a motion to approve and a motion to second. Do I have any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. It's a unanimous, and the motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2023-111, order discontinuance of portion of parkingway from Walter Hannan. Parkway to dead end.
I'd like to recognize Counselor McCarthy. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe I'd like to make a motion to move 2023-111 into the Ordinance Committee for advertising in a public hearing at a future date.
So motion made by Counselor McCarthy to refer this into the Ordinance Committee as well as advertisement. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to do a roll call on these. I know it's, we could do it all by itself, but I'd like to get a roll call. Oh, that's right, it's going into committee. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That's going to go into Ordinance and as well as Advertise. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-112, an order acceptance of General James McConville Way layout as public right of way.
Like to recognize Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Year 2023-112, I'd like to make a motion to move that into Ordinance and also to Advertise and have a public hearing at a future date.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to move this into Ordinance and to Advertise as well. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Devine. Do, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That is going to be into Ordinance and Advertise as well. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2023-113, an order acceptance of Walter J. Hannan Parkway layout from parkingway to the former Ross Way to public right of way.
Like to recognize Counselor McCarthy. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make another motion to move it into Ordinance for advertising and a public hearing at a future date.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to move this into Ordinance and to Advertise. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That is going into Ordinance and Advertise. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2023-114, order acceptance of General Joseph F. Dunford Drive layout for public right of way.
Like to recognize Counselor McCarthy.
A motion for 2023-114, move that order into Ordinance and Advertise and have a public hearing at a later date.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to move this into Ordinance and to Advertise. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Devine. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That is moved into Ordinance and Advertise.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
2023-110, a resolved request in that the city of Quincy Traffic Engineer Conduct a comprehensive study.
Like to waive the reading, and I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris. Go right ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. This resolve is my desperate effort after almost eight years pushing to assist the cut-through streets in Ward Six, which has been a nightmare to the residents with respect to speeding and in and out with no, with disregard of public safety to my constituents. Tonight, this resolve I am bringing forward, plain and simple, is a request to bring together the council, the city traffic engineer, and I'm sure our state legislature team as well to be involved, to take a hard dive to come to a possible solution of this serious issue that I hear, I have heard since my tenure as the Ward Six Counselor. The cut-through traffic affects residents crossing the streets, leaving their homes, getting in and out of their cars, walking their children, specifically in Ward Six. And I invite any of my other councilors who have other streets that are involved to please jump in and amend this resolution, but from Conant Road, Atlantic Street, Billings Street, Webster Street, Appleton Street, Milton Road, Colby Road, and in particular, North and South Bayfield Road. What I am, again, what I am asking for is the traffic engineer to have a review, come before us, and create a comprehensive traffic study regarding Quincy Shore Drives, cut-through streets that I had just mentioned, along North Quincy. Also, I would like that the mayor's office work with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, as well as our state delegation, as mentioned, to secure the necessary funding for the redesign and construction of a new intersection at East Quanum Street and Quincy Shore Drive. I, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them as best as I possibly can. But as I said, this, I had mentioned this the last meeting, that I was going to bring this forward, and I certainly, this is in the forefront, one of the, one of the things in the forefront in North Quincy that, and in Ward Six that I am going to be dealing with, especially over the next two years. So I ask, I ask for the support of the council. I look forward to some real, strong conversation, bringing, bringing the folks forward. I'll be reaching out to the state delegation personally to, you know, and I have no doubt in my mind with our state delegation about this, because we've worked well together on certain issues in Ward Six. So with that, I'd like, I'd ask your support, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So motion to approve, as well as, do you want to put it into any committee? Which committee?
Public, obviously, it's public safety.
Public safety, okay.
Yes, please.
And you'd like to approve and put it into public safety? If I could, before we get into the motion, I'd like to ask my Counselor Harris if you could amend it, a friendly amendment for Arthorpe Street.
Absolutely.
Okay. So if that's okay with you, we'd have the friendly amendment to add one more street to it, Arthorpe Street, which is right off of the Walston Beach area.
Absolutely. All the way down.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And with that, a motion is made by Counselor Harris to approve and put it into public safety, and then I have it seconded by Counselor Andronico. Any more discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That will be put into public safety, and it is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilors.
Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number seven, 2023-115, a resolve for child safety lead abatement.
Counselors, I have in front of you in your packets a resolution, child safety lead abatement. I'm going to read it to you, and if you have it in front of you, and then I'll talk a little bit about it, and hopefully get a, get a passage from when you get a motion. The city of Quincy has replaced more than 40 miles of publicly-owned water mains over the last 10 years. The city of Quincy publicly-owned water lines are lead-free. There are 2,788 privately-owned water service lines which run water from the public mains to the individual homes. And lead contamination of water service lines can lead to long-term illness in adults, and even mild lead poisoning can have permanent impact on attention and IQ of children. And lead poisoning in children can lead to damage to the nervous system, learning disabilities, shorter stature, impaired hearing, and impaired formation of the function of blood cells. In the interest of the public health in 2016, this council, which a lot of you guys were still on here, approved the borrowing of 1.5 million to replace 285 privately-owned water service lines identified to contain lead. The city of Quincy was one of the two municipalities that tests shows have actionable levels of lead contamination water, according to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA, in 2017, and tests in Quincy in 2019 and 2023 again showed higher-than-acceptable levels of lead contamination. As of 2023, 20, actually, 79 of the 285 privately-owned lead service lines identified in the replacement have not been replaced. And the remaining 79 homeowners have not cooperated with the city to replace these lead-contaminated lines. This is obviously a public health hazard to the residents. I therefore let it be resolved that the city of Quincy requests that the DPW make a referral to the Quincy Police Department to investigate the 79 properties to determine if children reside and take appropriate legal action, including but not limited to the referral of potential neglect to the Department of Children and Families. Be it further resolved that the city council requests the Inspection Service Department to investigate the 79 properties to determine if we have tenant occupied or take appropriate legal action, including but not limited to the issuance of civil fines and demands of compliance. Be it further resolved, the commission of DPW shall provide a status of the matter to the full city council within the next 45 days. Counselors, just to be clear, the city lines are not contaminated. You know, the property owners who refuse to fix the lead pipes need to be held accountable. So I ask my colleagues to approve this resolution and protect the safety of the, yes, go right ahead.
Mr. President, I very happily would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
I have an adoption for, and Counselor Phelan is going to make the motion to approve it. I'd like to also put it into Oversight, Public Safety, and Environmental and Public Health. And seconded by Counselor Kane. And any discussion on the motion? We'll go to Counselor Kane. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for introducing this. This is fascinating, and certainly a very important public health issue. I'm just curious as to, is there legal standing for DPW or inspectional services to actually enforce replacement of these lead, privately-owned lead pipes?
I think at this point, we don't have that oversight, and I don't know if the DPW Commissioner is here or inspectional services to let us know that answer.
Okay. I think that would be, I mean, because this is a great effort, I just want to be sure that we're doing the right things to make sure that the various bodies are empowered to make this happen.
We have our, you know, our Jim Timmons here in the building. I wonder if he has anything legally that he could add to this.
There are some pretty serious issues with enforcement. The question you raised is one that I intended to address with the President after the fact. It was being submitted tonight, and because of the important nature of what's being proposed, we're going to take some time to look at some of this. But you're on to a very significant issue. This, the state constitution only authorizes municipal legislative bodies to, to take certain actions, and the problem you have here is you'd be forcing a private property owner to take some action with their property. So notwithstanding the noble objective, we want to take a look at the extent to which you could force that to occur. Might be the case that we can do a lot of what's being sought here and then get voluntary compliance.
Yeah. No, I mean, interesting concept, because I know many people have different opinions about how people maintain their properties anyway, and so I think this is just the start. This is interior. It's infrastructure. It's important. It has to do with public health. But where does this stop and where does it end as well, is the question. So appreciate, though, the introduction. I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. And we're going to put this into Oversight, Public Safety, and Environmental and Public Health. We're going to have discussions here in the council to go over this. Any other councilors that want to? Go right ahead, Counselor Devine.
So just so I'm clear, we're talking about forcing homeowners to change their lead lines that have been like that for years. I feel like we'd be pushing a financial burden on them when they can treat their water on the backside when it comes through, possibly. I'm not an expert on this, but I have a few constituents that have been talking about it, and sometimes when the roads get done over, we replace the water line at that point. Previously, we used to have grants that would help people financially. So I'm, I'd hate to see putting a financial burden on our constituents when they could easily, not easily, I don't know the actual way to remove lead from water, but if there's an easier way and they can do it, that I would, I hope we're looking into that before we're going to make somebody incur a huge cost.
And I'd like to refer to Chief of Staff Chris Walker. Go right ahead, Chris.
Through you, Mr. President. It's a great question. Counselor Devine, the city does provide no-cost replacement for these lead service replacements. We've done so for quite some time. There was a major program four or five years ago where we went out actively sought as many of these private homeowners as we possibly could, enlisted them in the effort, getting them to understand the situation and providing them with the lead service replacement. As we do now, we sort of pick them off as they come, Counselor. We find out that someone has a lead service line. We know maybe, as you mentioned, we might be in the house or near the street for whatever reason, and we'll then go in. But again, as, as Counselor Kane, and as is the goal of this initiative, is to get those folks who have not availed themselves to the opportunity that exists right now. We try to find, we try to get folks to, to come to us and say, you know, I am one of these folks that has a lead service line. Would you please replace it? And the answer is always yes. So part of this process, Mr. President, we're happy to play our part. The DPW Commissioner's got loads of information on this. He's unfortunately a little bit under the weather this evening. But a further education process on how we get folks to understand the seriousness of the issue and, you know, just how easy it is for us to come in and help, help folks fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. This is government working together to try to solve issues and solutions to solving these issues that are going on in the city for the 79 residents that have these lead pipes. Any other councilors? Seeing none, those who have a motion to approve made by Counselor, Counselor Phelan. We have a seconded by Counselor Kane. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. That will be put, is it's approved in Oversight, Public Safety, and Environmental and Public Health. Thank you, councilors, for your support on that. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2023-113, confirmation Quincy Housing Authority Board appointment.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Counselor McCarthy. Motion to approve. Motion to approve made by Counselor McCarthy for the appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Counselor Mahoney.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2023-117, a gift for $2,500 from various donors for Dia.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kane. Seconded by Counselor Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. I think that is, is that it, Madam Clerk?
It is.
That is all for our agenda items for tonight. Now, approval of previous meeting minutes of October 16, 2023. Motion approved made by Counselor Kane. Seconded by Counselor Devine. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Oh, and we'll put that into the notes, the exception that Counselor Phelan was not at the meeting. Have that edited?
I'm sorry. We'll make that edit.
Edit. Thank you. That's amended in minutes. Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Moving on. Unfinished business in preceding meeting. Moving on. Reports of committees. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counselor Devine, please.
I should have done this in the last meeting. I'd like to recognize that Mary Mulligan, age 93, a longtime resident of Quincy, passed away on October 2nd, which is Ann's mother. She was born in Ireland, came over here when she was very young, moved to Quincy for a long time, I think 55 years. She was very passionate with her family. She was very Catholic, very, very religious, and she was married to her husband, Joseph, for 72 years. I also heard that she really likes potato chips, preferably Lay's, I believe. I wanted to let Ann and her family know that our thoughts were with you then, and our thoughts and prayers are with you going forward. Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. My condolences, Ann. Yeah, go right ahead. I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Counselor Devine. I, it really does, it does mean a lot to me. So I also want to thank the Quincy Police, because they were there for us for the day of the services, and she was also very, very good supporters, too. of the services, and she was also buried with some Werther's, too. So Werther's were a big thing in her life, too. Yeah, she's terribly missed, and it's going to be a very hard holiday season without her. But I know my sister Helen, who passed away in '21, was also able to be buried with her, too, so it was a complete closure for that day for our family, and I thank all of the Counselors in the chamber for recognizing and coming and supporting me during that time, so I thank, thank you for the recognition. And I know my mother would be just looking down on us right now, so thank you.
Any other counselors? Go right, Kenny. Counsel, I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
I thank Counsel Devine for allowing me to do this, but I happen to know this gentleman since, back before high school and everything like that, and he worked for me for several years here in the city. It's with sadness that I asked his counsel to remember Jack Leiden, John Jack Leiden. Anyone who worked for the city at any point in time, remember him being downstairs. Any of the council mailings that went out, it was Jack that got them out for you. He was one of these guys who worked over 40 years for the city. He originally grew up in Squanum. He was an Eagle Scout out of Troop 24, Squanum. We both got our Eagle Scout at the same time, so I knew Jack very well from that time. We became good friends, I knew him all through. His father was a firefighter here in Quincy. Mother worked for the council on aging. They always had the biggest smile on the world on their face when you met them. Great laugh, an infectious laugh. People used to light up with him, and, but the thing is, he was a dedicated city employee for years. He never, there were times when we had to get the tax bills out. Everyone says it's not a popular thing to do. Yeah, it's not, but the city would default if we didn't have the money, and we had to have him out by December 31st. Many a night, Jack would be here at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. There was nights we had to finish the budget. He was always the one when I would stay, that Jack, there was never a complaint. They said, let's stay and get it done. Let's get the work done. He was always into getting the work done, and he had an infectious laugh, and he had nicknames, I think, for everyone. I think of a couple of them. Princess Dark Cloud. Most of the counselors don't realize he had a nickname for all of us, too. He told me, he told me mine after I, after I started, when I was first a counselor, and then he told me mine when I became his boss. He said, don't get mad at me. I can't actually remember the nickname he had for me, but he had nicknames for everybody in the city. And he was just a wonderful guy. He just lost a two-year battle with pancreatic cancer. His wife Jackie, three daughters, they are some of the nicest people you ever want to meet, and his whole family will do anything possibly they can for you, anytime, anyplace. They're just really, really good people. So one thing I've asked, I ask everyone to have the Leiden family in your thoughts and in your prayers. As you know, Jack was an avid sportsman, so his burial is going to have something to do with the sea, because his last two years, he worked on a tuna boat before he succumbed to cancer. That was his favorite, favorite thing to do. So I ask all the counselors to remember him in your thoughts and your prayers, and also remember this was one dedicated city employee that gave his heart and soul to the city. And so I ask everyone to think, pass it along, and your hearts and your prayers for the Leiden family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thoughts and prayers for? Any other counselors? So I got two items real quick. I want to thank the City of Quincy Mayor Koch and Veteran Services Christine Cugini for an unbelievable Veterans Day parade and ceremony. I know a lot of the folks in the council were here, as well as the residents out in the city. I know that some of the cities and towns across the municipalities have discontinued some of these ceremonies and some of these parades, and we continue to do it here in Quincy, and it was a, it was a nice day up at Marymount Park area, so, and we started the route at a different location, because a little bit of areas on Cottont Street. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for letting me know. Appreciate that. But kudos to the entire city and everybody involved in that. So thank you for the Veterans Day parade and ceremony. My second item here that I have is for our fellow Counselor Chuck Phelan. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it last month on October 3rd of 2023. A couple of us folks went to the Quincy Firefighters Association Retirement Dinner, and they presented you with the award, and you weren't able to give it. They gave it to me as a council president to give it to you. So tonight, I'm going to, I'll wait till after the meeting, Counsel Kane, because I'd like to present this to you, as well as have a photo after the meeting is over, so I don't hold anybody up. But it's from the local 792, President Tom Bowes, and, you know, Chief of Police Joe Jackson and the gang, presented to Counsel Charles Phelan. Chuck, in recognition of your years of hard work and continued support as a Quincy City Counselor, to help improve the working conditions and safety of the members of the Quincy Firefighters Association, local 792, we are forever grateful. Given this day, October 3rd, 2023, and we'll amend that to Monday, November 13, 2023, through the City Council. But thank you for everything you've done, Chuck. We're really going to miss you, and this is how they're appreciation to you. We'll do a photo after the meeting is over, which we're at the end, anyway. Any other counselors? Motions and orders and resolutions. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Any counselors? Anything in that little book that we have for the next couple of meetings? We've got three more to go. We've got Monday, November 20th, which is a week from tonight, at 6:30 PM. Then on Monday, December 4th, at 6:30, and then on Monday, December 18th, at 6:30. So one more a week from tonight, and then two more in December, the 4th and the 18th. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn made by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Devine? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right? It is now 7:07 PM. The motion carries. It is now adjourned.